Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus.
President.
Jason Blair. Scott Singer. Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham. Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, item number C is a swearing in of newly appointed council member Melissa Hunt by Judge Lake Burden.
Please raise your right hand if you'd like to speak. I state your name.
I am Melissa Hunt.
You solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And I will not knowingly receive, either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other value obtained.
Any money or other value obtained.
The performance or nonperformance.
Sure, the performance or nonperformance.
Any act or duty.
Any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
Further swear.
I further swear.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
As city councilperson.
As city councilperson.
City of Moore.
City of Moore.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I think you've done this a few times.
I've done two.
That's pretty good.
It'd be.
That's very impressive, though. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Your Honor. Item D is a roll call.
Robert Kraus.
President.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Present.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham. Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, item number C is a swearing in of newly appointed council member Melissa Hunt by Judge Lake Burden.
Please raise your right hand if you'd like to speak. I state your name.
I am Melissa Hunt.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And I will not knowingly receive, either directly or indirectly.
And I will not knowingly receive.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other value obtained.
Any money or other value obtained.
The performance or nonperformance.
Sure, the performance or nonperformance.
Any act or duty.
Any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation.
Other than the compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
Further swear.
I further swear.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
As city councilperson.
As city councilperson.
City of Moore.
City of Moore.
Do the best of my ability.
Do the best of my ability.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I think you've done this a few times.
I've done two.
That's pretty good.
It'd be.
That's very impressive, though. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Your Honor. Item D is a roll call.
Robert Kraus.
President.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Present.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham. Glenn Lewis.
Here. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December 15, 2014. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular park board meeting held November 4, 2014. Item C, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held October 14, 2014. Item D, approve payment to AAA insurance company in the amount of $5,179.67 for settlement of a vehicle accident. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $3,522,275.34.
Make the motion to approve.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody get your -- everybody get your claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is approve the preliminary plat of retail by the lake located in the southwest quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 19th Street and east of Ginger Avenue. Application by SAB 1, Steve Bell, Planning Commission, recommended approval of this item, 9 to 0. This is in item three.
Mayor and council, this property is located north of Southwest 19th Street and east of Ginger Avenue. The property was rezoned to C2 as a PUD in 2002 when most of the residential properties fronting along 19th Street were removed to make way for the commercial development that was coming in. A 12-inch water main is available on Southwest 19th Street, and a sewer line is located on the south side of the site and will be extended to serve the lots. Access is available from Southwest 19th Street, which is an existing street. Two curb cuts will be allowed to serve this development, and a private access easement is required to provide access to lots 3 and 4. There is a 100-year flood plain located on the east side of this property. It also serves as a major drainage way for the city's westside basin. The applicant has submitted drainage calculations to ensure that the base flood elevation will not be raised with the new development. These drainage cals are currently under review by the city's consulting engineer. There is one remaining residential property located to the west of the proposed development just south of Ginger Avenue. This residential property is the last remaining property from the residences that once lined Southwest 19th Street. The applicant must include an access easement for this residential property into the plat as their only way ingress egress is through 19th Street. The proposed development is within a sanitary sewer recoupment district and shall comply with those fees upon filing of the final plat. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
It says there's four commercial lots. Do we know or can we say what they're going to be?
We do know that one of the lots will be used for a hideaway piece of a standalone building.
All right. David and I agree with that. That's okay.
No proof?
Yeah. Okay.
Make the motion to approve?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is approve the preliminary -- excuse me. Item number four is approve a lot split located on the northwest quarter of Section 11, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of northeast 27th Street and west of Eastern Avenue. Application by Larry Pennington. This is in North 2.
Mayor and council, this property is located south of northeast 27th Street and east of Little Lane in the Pioneer Acres addition. The property is currently zoned residential as part of PUD number 914, which is for senior citizen duplexes. However, the PUD did include splitting off this existing residence to be sold as a standalone property, and that's what the applicant is requesting now. There is water, and there is water that serves this property. It does utilize a private septic system, and staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Here again, is there anything we can talk about?
It's just going to be used as a residence, so.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider renewal of a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for a wasteload allocation study at the Canadian River in the amount not to exceed $190,167 and supplement the budget accordingly.
Mayor, this as the agenda item says is renewal of a contract with ACOG. This study, wasteload allocation study of the river has been going now, ongoing probably for a couple of years. It's not any new money to us. It's just renewal of a contract for calendar year 2015 for ACOG's purposes in terms of the final billings and all. So it's the same study that's been ongoing. The final results of that are in or close to being in in terms of the study, which, as I said earlier in the email, will ultimately have an impact on what our discharge permit through DEQ will require us to do in terms of the effluent hits the river. We don't know anything about that yet, but this is essentially a house keep.
Is this the last year you think we'll have to renew this?
Yes, that study is done, and they've told me that they'll just be billing for the final amount on the study, so yes.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider renewal of a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, for a wasteload allocation study at the Canadian River in the amount not to exceed $190,167 and supplement the budget accordingly.
Mayor, this as the agenda item says is renewal of a contract with ACOG. This study, wasteload allocation study of the river has been going now, ongoing probably for a couple of years. It's not any new money to us. It's just renewal of a contract for calendar year 2015 for ACOG's purposes in terms of the final billings and all. So it's the same study that's been ongoing. The final results of that are in or close to being in in terms of the study, which, as I said earlier in the email, will ultimately have an impact on what our discharge permit through DEQ will require us to do in terms of the effluent hits the river. We don't know anything about that yet, but this is essentially a house keep.
Is this the last year you think we'll have to renew this?
Yes, that study is done, and they've told me that they'll just be billing for the final amount on the study, so yes.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Not for the vote, please.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number six is consider adopting Resolution Number 81015, amending the City of Moore's schedule of fees and charges by establishing garbage and refuge collection rates for areas outside of the city limits and designating prior budget approved water rates fee -- or excuse me, water rates and fee for the second polycard.
Mayor, the primary purpose of this item is to establish the refuse -- residential refuse collection rate for outside city limits customers. This came about as a result of the Millers Acres group requesting municipal pickup from us, and you all approved that, but we didn't ever establish a rate. So the suggested rate, recommended rate here is $15.25 a month. That's essentially one and a half times what our current inside-city rate is. We're not going to be providing the on-call or terminator service to people outside, so we didn't recommend the double rate, which is what we charge for water and sewer outside city limits. So that's our recommendation. The other part of this is we never did formally adopt or install the water rates and the additional $1 per polycard that went into effect back in July of last year into the rate structure. So that's formally doing it. There's not any new dollars, any rate increases or anything that's hadn't already been approved in the first place.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Do you have a motion in a second? Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number seven is discuss and consider approval of an upgrade to the city financial software in the amount of $692,565 to be funded over two fiscal years.
Mayor and council, this agenda item requests funding for an upgrade to our financial software system. The primary reason for this is to enable us to better account and report our grant funds, especially in regards to our disaster recovery grants. A second reason for this would be to position the city for the future growth and other potential federal grants that we may receive. The short review of our software situation, we've had the current software for about 17 years now. It's InCode is the name of it, and the software company we're proposing for you is Munis. They operate under the same parent company, so it's just a -- it's a simplified way to change the software as far as the conversion of the data because it's under the same general parent company. This is a lot of money, but it -- we found that it's really necessary to properly account for these large federal grants that we've been awarded following the tornadoes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Jim, how long do you think it'll take to pay for itself? Because you're right, it's a lot of money, but they should pay for itself pretty quick, shouldn't they?
Well, I believe that we'll get a life of at least 17 years out of it. The system that we installed back in 1998 has done us well, but in some areas, we've just kind of outgrown it. It's a software that's designed for smaller cities. It works for us, but I think this Munis software will last at least 17 or 20 years into the future.
And does that come with the troubleshooting help and stuff like that?
Yes, there's maintenance and service that goes with it. Of course, there's a fee for that. There's an annual ongoing fee for that, but they do have an 800 call center that we can contact as we do with our current software.
How much is that fee?
For this first year, it's $113,000 for all the applications.
So we're looking at close to a million bucks or?
Yes. Now, the 113 is -- we're paying that now. That's something we have.
Do we need to bid this out? That's a lot of money. According to the charter, don't we have to take bids on this?
If we declare as a sole source based upon factors that Jim could delineate for you on what we have, working with what we have, getting the best of this prize, I think if somebody else came in and started from zero, there would be more of this being a sole source and working with what we have and also somewhat of the intellectual property, expertise, professional services, I think we'd justify this.
So it's your opinion we can do this?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, is this pretty tailored to our city? Is that kind of what they do with this type of program?
Well, Tyler Technologies, all they do is governmental accounting or governmental financial software. So yes, I mean, it's designed for us. It's designed for a municipality, the applications that we would be buying, and it's used in, I don't know, many, many, many cities across the country.
So is this a bite to the iron?
No, sir, it is not. It's not something that we foresaw happening this year. It's primarily because of these large federal grants that we need a more flexible, robust system to account for them.
How much money have we actually received from the federal government from HUD?
HUD, now, the entitlement grants, we've received about $300,000 a year for several years. As far as the disaster recovery grants, we have not requested any funds. We plan to do that this month.
So we're going to spend $700,000 to monitor funds we don't have?
Well, we have plans of receiving potentially $52 million, but we've just not drawn down any funds yet.
I do want to add, we actually are ready to draw down funds for the HUD disaster recovery grants that we've received. We're ready to draw down, I think, around $150,000 to $250,000. The problem is that we cannot draw anything down until we get a financial software system that HUD approves, that can handle all of these different funding and accounting techniques. So unless we get a new financial system, we can't draw down any money. So we're kind of caught in that catch-22.
Okay. All right. You should have said so up front.
As Jim said, this is not something that we anticipated. The current software we have works very well for us, but the detail that HUD requires project accounting, I believe is the terminology, and we potentially will have dozens, if not hundreds, of different projects that will be built with all these HUD disaster recovery dollars, and we've got to be able to account for those as HUD requires, and the old software won't do that. Now, I did mention earlier in the email, but we do feel like we'll be able to get some of this money reimbursed through the grant for administrative costs, but not anywhere near that amount. We don't know for sure, 10%, maybe 20% in that vicinity, but it's something that we don't feel like at this point that we have a choice. But on the other side of it, as Jim said, this is going to allow us, with other grant funds and going forward into the future with the growth in community, the growth of our budget every year, to better handle our finances.
Okay. Where are we pulling this money from?
It would be from reserves, from my agency fund.
We intend to -- we're not going to be spending all of this money tomorrow. This will be over two budget years, two fiscal years, and we're going to implement what we need to, what we have to first in order to satisfy the requirements of HUD and then bring on all the other modules. And you might just mention everything, Jim, that'll be included, billing, everything.
Yeah, it's all of our financial system, which would be the general ledger, budget preparation, accounts payable, payroll, fixed assets, cashierian, customer service, utility billing, inventory, work orders. Work orders is a big, big thing with the HUD grant. They like to see work orders, so we'll have that module. Just all the financial functions will be included in this.
We're anticipating this to take several months, if not a year or more to.
It's a 12- to 16-month project is what they've told me.
Okay. Well, if they require it for us to get the money, you have to do it.
That's kind of the way we're looking at it, yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eight is consider awarding RFP number 1415-005, National Disaster Resilience Competition to Innovative Emergency Management Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $96,734.04 to be funded through the Community Development Lot Grant Disaster Recovery Fund.
Mayor and council, HUD is, in collaboration with the Rockefeller Foundation, is sponsoring the National Disaster Resiliency Competition. It is a two-phase competitive grant process that will award nearly $1 billion in the HUD Disaster Recovery Fund to eligible communities. This competition is intended to help communities recover from prior disasters as well as improve their ability to withstand future disasters. This competition is structured in two phases. The first phase is called a framing phase that involves a lot of scientific research and citizen comments to determine what possible hazards or disasters that your community possibly could face in the future. And then the second phase is going to be an implementation phase, where then you will select a project to help your community be more resilient to that or those disasters. In phase two, the -- I'm sorry, the HUD will invite a subset of the Phase One applicants to participate in the Phase Two competition. So you have to -- not everyone who participates in Phase One will be invited to participate in Phase Two. The city did publish a request for proposals for professional services for the application process or the Phase One process. The application does require narratives explaining the science behind resiliency projects as well as certain hazards that your community might be exposed to. The city received five responses to the RFP, and we did interview all five. The prices ranged anywhere from $20,000 to $200,000. The city did recommend the Innovative Emergency Management, Inc., to take up the Phase One application. We felt that they were the most responsive to our proposal. They also include on their team a list of scientists who do this for a living, which most of the other firms did not include that aspect. And again, the science is going to be a key aspect in this, which, of course, we don't have anyone on staff who is that knowledgeable in this field, so we feel like we'll be really relying a lot on this, on the consultant. Given any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
It seems like one of those Nigerian emails, send me $20,000 and we'll get a billion in a $100 million competition. That's what it sounds like to me.
Yes. This is funded by the Disaster Recovery Funds, and I will say that the City of Moore was specifically called out in the NOFA, which we believe means that we will be getting something, but we do need to put our best foot forward because we want to get as much as we can.
I hope we get our $100,000 back.
Yes, we will definitely. I think we will do that.
Okay. Move to approve. All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Oh, you did? Sorry. I didn't think. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please, if there's any other comments or questions?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number nine is consider amending the Public Works Maintenance Contract with Silverstar Construction Incorporated, required language for Community Development Lot Grant, another deal.
This is another requirement, Mayor, that from HUD, as you know, we bid out the Silverstar contract or the Public Works Maintenance Contract recently, awarded that new contract to Silverstar. These requirements that are to be included in the contract were included as a base requirements in the bid documents, the bid proposals, so it's not anything new. It's just language requirements that they're requiring to be put into the contract as far as a lot of the projects that will be built by Silverstar will be public works-type project, roadways, that sort of construction project.
To the Bacon-Davis-Wang Act? Is that what that is primarily?
Yes. Well, it's that, it's civil rights, it's all sorts of things, but it's those requirements for federal dollars.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December 15, 2010 -- excuse me, 2014. Now, item B is approve a contract amendment to change the name of -- on a contract with Consolidated Benefit Resources LLC to Jerry Horton LLC, DBA Consolidated Benefit Resources. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $894,957.05.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 11 is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December 15, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for 2014, 2015 in the amount of $366,299.01 to be funded. dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion or items on here, or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the special Moore Economic Development Authority meeting.
Item twelve is real call, call real quick.
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham. Terry Kavner.
Here.
Item thirteen, consider adoption of resolution number thirteen fourteen of the trustees of the Moore Economic Development Authority, authorizing the optional redemption of its sales tax revenue note series two thousand and thirteen, parks, park recreation facility project dated February one, two thousand and thirteen, authorizing prior written notice to noteholders be given for optional redemption as authorized under the general indenture and the series two thousand and thirteen supplemental note indenture and containing other provisions relating theretoheto.
Mayor and Mr. Chairman, this item is to authorize the early payoff of the sales tax revenue note that we entered into back in two thousand and thirteen for the construction of park facilities. You recall that after the November two thousand and twelve election, the voters approved a course of sales tax, and we issued a short-term revenue note. It was at two million, approximately two million dollars, to get a head start on the parks construction projects. We built a number of those projects, but got slowed down some, I think, by the tornado that came along, so we have first option to pay this note off now as of January first. There's sufficient funds in the account to pay off the note and to continue to construct and build the improvements that were promised to our voters that were included in that sales tax. So it'll save a little interest to pay it off before the July deadline to pay it off anyways.
Can we do any questions?
Yes.
I'm making a motion.
Any other comment, question?
I think that was a good move when we did that, moved that up early, borrowed the money, because the interest was very nominal, and we got several projects finished.
Yes. I agree with your decision. Would you call for the vote, please?
I made the motion.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority and free community council.
All right, thank you. The lead director reflected all the members that were present before are still present. Item number fourteen is new business. Item A, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Any items from the city council or trustees? Welcome aboard.
Thank you, excited to be here.
Well, glad you're here. Anything else? Anybody else? Congratulations, Robert.
Thank you, thank you much. Bow to more integrity.
What, did she twist her arm? I think you did. Did she twist your arm? You didn't sound too excited.
She just put up with me.
Oh, okay. Item C is items from the city manager or trust manager.
I don't have anything there.
What? Okay. Item fifteen is adjournment.
So move.
Yes.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please. There is no discussion.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming. Wow, that was almost a record.